Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. If you please bear with me while I read the meeting procedure. All persons in attendance at the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, PCBOA, meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate and/or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conducts or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by three-thirty PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. The Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by the Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicant to come forward to the presenter's table, state his/her or their names and address for the record, and explain his/her or their request. The PCBOA will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his/her name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used to recognize speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant. All comments are to be directed towards the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the PCBOA. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close public comment period on the agenda item, and no further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comments. The PCBOA will continue its discussion on the agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made or seconded, the PCBOA will develop findings of facts for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at six PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until ten PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after nine forty-five. The PCBOA may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at ten PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date and time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at six PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA, through the chair, may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing we have is the Planning Commission, and it will be the approval of the minutes, the August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments on those Planning Commission minutes?
This is Mike. I make motion to accept the minutes.
This is Ken, I'll second.
We have a motion by Mike, a second by Ken to accept the Planning Commission meeting minutes of August twenty-sixth as presented. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
It's Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. The meeting minutes have been approved. And there's no old business, so we'll move on to the first item of new business, the conditional use permit application, five CU dash-two-four by Hubbard County, part of Government Lot Seven and part of Government Lot Eight, Section thirty-three, Township one forty-four, Range thirty-two, Hart Lake Township on Garfield Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one zero point three-three point zero zero five eight zero. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit per Section four oh one, Table one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a county park. Do we have the applicant here, or the... Perfect, can you please come to the table? Thank you, and you can just please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, yeah, good evening. My name's Corey Kimball, I'm the land commissioner over at the Public Works Building, so deal with public land on, you know, Hubbard County ownership and management.
Okay, thank you, Corey. All right, if you would also give me your address real quick, did you say address yet, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
One oh one Crocus Hill Street, Parker Rapids, Minnesota.
Perfect, thank you, sir. And then you can go ahead with your request around this conditional use.
Okay, so a couple years ago, we went through the whole conditional use permitting process, but it never got complete somehow, so here we are again, working on it. So, back, a little bit of history, two thousand and sixteen, this lot on Garfield Lake was gifted to the county for a public, um, public use, park, beach. It's kind of always been a beach along the township road, and the person who owned it prior decided to be better off in county hands to manage that, so we're requesting a, uh, conditional use permit to operate the property as a public beach and then public park also. Small shelter that can fit three picnic tables, a small playground, and I can kind of get some of the dimensions here, seventy-five foot by one hundred foot beach along Garfield Lake, and no structures, wells, or sewers near the lake or the rest of the property at this time. So, a small cement pad for the, the small shelter, which is approximately four hundred feet from the edge of the lake. And the whole area that encompasses the, the future park or shelter and playground and parking area would be a hundred foot by a hundred and sixty-five feet. And the current restroom facilities out in that area are portable porta-potties, and that's what we continue to use for the, the near future, so nothing too major, just to, to continue to provide the public service for a park up in that area as, as promised in previous years.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Do we have any questions or comments from the board from Lot View?
This, Ken, I have one. I think in the previous CUP, and I think there was a permit issued for a small platform, concrete platform, to have porta-potties put on. Was that platform ever built?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, but you will, as part of this...
Yeah, probably up by that parking area.
Okay.
And the porta-potties, we're not so worried about it, it'd be the picnic shelter that would, we'd want the cement slab for. Currently, the porta-potties sit on the dirt, it's not a big issue.
Do you use, are they there now? Do you use them there now?
There has been, yep, yep.
In the parking area or on the, on the beach area?
I believe it's at the beach area, there's one porta-potty, yep.
Well, there was one, I guess we didn't see what was there.
No, it's probably picked up now, I think October first was the pickup date, or, yeah.
This is Tim speaking. Did you do any traffic survey or have a, an opinion on...
Yeah, I, to be honest, I...
What it may go to once you do a playground, or?
Yeah, and well, we just hear most of his phone calls from the, the public in that area, wanting more, uh, more opportunities to do stuff with their kids, and, you know, they've always, they've gone to that beach for years, but they also want to have a picnic and have somewhere to sit down and have a picnic, so it, you know, we haven't done much for traffic, traffic checks or anything like that, but there is the phone calls and the, from different meetings, you hear it from the public up in that area. And that is a, it's a fairly new road, uh, which is kind of nice, it gets, it does get used quite a bit, so.
Is, is there any speed limit? I remember seeing...
I believe there is, I think there's a thirty, either thirty or forty mile an hour speed limit there.
Is there any possibility that you could post, let's say, at about fifteen miles an hour?
Yeah, we could work with the township and see.
I'm concerned about the safety and the traffic, people walking along the road, and it wasn't obvious to us that there was any way to make a path from the parking area.
Sure.
But I would think if there's a safety issue, and I know the street that I live on, uh, there's a section that is kind of windy and driveways, and they posted at fifteen, so is the condition maybe consider posting the speed limit?
Yeah, for sure, yep.
And no parking signs on Pickrell Road?
Mm-hmm, yep, for sure, yeah, no, we'd want definitely slow traffic going through that area.
This is Mike, a point of clarification on, on the pad that was never built, is the intent to build that pad at the beach?
No, no, I, I kind of made the decision, I don't want any concrete pads right next to the beach.
Okay, thank you, that just, because of some of the write-ups here, just to make sure we get it right when we do our conditions.
Yeah, I know past, this past CUP, they wanted the pad right next to the beach, and there's no use for it there.
Thank you.
There's a picnic table there, and it does just fine.
Okay, do we have any other questions at this time from the board members? At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for a public comment, please. And seeing no public comment, I will... Oh, well, please come right up to the podium here. Yes, and go ahead and please state your name and address for the record, and then write it down on the log, too.
Sure, my name is Kyle Boating. I own the property right to the south of this, uh, two-nine-nine-eight-one, or two-nine-eight-eight-one. And we have so much trouble with that beach being there. I've never called in because I'm not that type of a guy. I, I bought the lot knowing that that public beach was there, so we know that that's what's going on. With that being said, they steal our firewood, they come across, use our kayaks, they go on our dock. I've got no trespassing signs up, I actually put up a fence. They don't, they don't respect that stuff at all. That area is so far out of town, and there's no really homes, there's no people that live there full-time. These high school kids come there after dark and right before dark, and, again, I've never complained about it, because I was a kid once, too, but, you know, they're, they're wrapping doughnuts, and they're, you know, going off course with their four-wheelers and their trucks and their side-by-sides on our property, so I put up trees in between every one of the rocks to try and defer them from coming across, and they've still went through. I've got ruts in my, I can't even cut grass in spots. So I, I think by putting this park there, it's going to be that much more of an opportunity for them to be on my property even more. If the park does get approved, my hope would just be that there would be at least a four-foot fence that would go across the whole property, because being between their dogs and, if it's just going to be a natural fence, people aren't gonna, they're not going to respect that. I know that, because they don't already. And so to, to bring even more limelight and have that picnic table up there, just, I don't, I don't see people using it actually, because nobody even parks in the parking lot anyway. They park right down by the beach, so if a cement pad is going to be poured, it should be by the beach where the picnic table is. The picnic table, I watched teenagers wreck it, physically watched them do it. Started walking towards them, they saw me, they got in their cars, and they took off. Again, I didn't, I didn't call it in because that's not the type of guy, and I'm not going to be calling the cops in the county for everything once a week. With that being said, I, the county knows that this happened because they replaced the picnic table, so you don't have to believe me. They replaced it, they know this stuff happens there, so that's just my concern, so if the park does get put up there, I would hope that there'd be a fence. We've got dogs, and we don't want other people's dogs running across. That would just be my only, my only hope if this does get, go through, so.
Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Is, is the, the, the access to your property the cause of problem? It's out of the parking lot, it's not from the beach area direction?
Nope, it's on the east side of where that ninety-degree curve is.
Where the, where the line of boulders are?
Nope.
They come, they come across that onto your property? Okay.
Yep, you can, you can go there, look at the ruts right now, they're still there.
And this is Veronica speaking, you mentioned you put a fence up as well?
Yep, by the beach.
By the beach, down by the beach side, okay.
Yeah, and I put about two feet on my property, even though Chip from the county told me I could put it right on, on the lot line. I didn't, I didn't want to do that because of...
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure it was on my lot line, so I actually gave the public beach two feet.
So you put a fence over that old road grade?
Yep, yeah, a black, a real nice black-looking chain link fence. Talked to Chip about it, he said it was okay. He told me to put it right on the lot line, but again, I, so I gave the beach two feet. So there's plenty of room there to put a pad down there. People don't, they do not walk from that parking area down to the beach, they just don't. So I don't, I don't, I think it would be a waste of money to put that...
They park on Pickrell Road, then?
What's that?
They park on Pickrell Road?
Yep, they park right on Pickrell Road.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comments, I will go ahead and close public comment.
Corey, if this gets approved, what thoughts do you have on patrolling and or controlling parking along Pickrell? And possibly controlling after hours or after dark access or use?
Yeah, so we have a deputy that actually works under our department, which he, this could kind of be under his work, too, he does a lot of parks, um, patrolling for us. Either him or the township, and Lions Club is also offered their help with different activities out there, whether controlling traffic or providing assistance with different things we need out there, so.
What were your thought, what would your thoughts be about placing a fence?
Yeah, and that we've, I've talked with, about that with commissioners, and we, uh, I would like to have a privacy fence, probably a wooden fence along that, the property line, so.
Not like a chain link?
No, I'd rather, I'd rather be at, you know, a wooden, wooden fence.
So that could be part of a condition we could place on it?
Yeah, yep, it's, maybe not the whole property line, maybe along the parking area, and then, uh, if needed, down by the beach, is, that could be, you know, rather not put a lot of extra cost into it, but, you know, at least along the parking area and a little bit extended from that, too.
Well, based on what the person just said, and if it were placed on that whole line along the parking lot...
Yep.
In his property.
And, and we could, it might not be done the first year, but for sure, within a couple of years, we could, we could do the whole thing.
It says about a hundred fifty feet, is that what I got?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, it'd be five hundred feet, probably, from the road to the woods.
Oh, it is that far, okay.
Five fifty, so it's, it'd be a good amount of...
If I asked this previous speaker, when he asks about a fence, are you thinking all five hundred feet, or, because the parking lot's only about a hundred feet?
Yep, and that's where everything would be right in that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say from the east road, you wouldn't need to fence that first hundred and fifty feet or nothing.
Yep.
But definitely from the wooded area, because they...
Yeah.
I can see already they'll cross there on my property, I mean, with, with side-by-sides and everything else.
Okay.
But it wouldn't have to be all five hundred feet, but definitely from the woods and extended past later, the playground is going to be...
Yep, that's what my thoughts are, too, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is Veronica speaking, I just wanted some clarification, then, so there is not that ten by ten concrete platform at all, there's nothing on the, the property right now?
No, there's no concrete, no.
So the permit that was issued back in two thousand and eighteen, never...
No, it never went through, I'm not sure why it didn't, or the previous person didn't follow up on some things, but, uh, yeah, it's a, it's, there's no concrete out there. There's a, I think, one picnic table and one porta-potty, the porta-potty's gone.
Okay.
This is Mike, um, in regards to a fence, um, an alternative to wooden, which is a high-maintenance item and, and very expensive, I'm wondering if chain link and additional tree plantings to give more screening, natural screening, might be an, an alternative, uh, that might be a little bit cheaper in the long run and easier to maintain than a wooden fence.
Yeah, no, I, I have no issues with that, I just, you know, if they want privacy, their lot's so close to ours, I think that wood would create a sound barrier, and, um, it, it's true, though, there is maintenance along with that, uh, chain link would be great, and I, I have no issues either way, so, um, just, the wood might just create a little more of a sound barrier, till the trees get older anyways.
Eric, could you go back and measure the distance from the woods to about, past where the houses are, keep going about there, how far is that? So that'd be about three hundred feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that'd be, that'd be fine, I, I would think.
Um, this is Veronica speaking, have you considered placing any type of signs that say, you know, this, for the parking area, and that that's the parking area, and, you know, just establishing some type of barrier, so that you could say, you know, this is our designated parking area for this park, is that way...
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, yep.
They don't have to be, I just was curious if you had considered that?
Yeah, oh, for sure.
Especially because we do have some concerns.
Yep, yeah, we definitely don't want people parking along the road, so...
Well, the road and just the parking area itself, I mean, I know if you place a fence there, then obviously you can put a small sign on the fence, depending on what kind of fence you place.
Yep.
Um, because you don't, it doesn't have to be like they mentioned, anything solid wood, chain link, still could be attached to the chain link, you know, this is...
Sure, yep, yep, yeah, no, that's, uh, some good thoughts there, yeah.
Veronica, I'm gonna suggest some conditions before I would make a motion.
Absolutely.
One is that, that if we approve this, uh, that you'll put no parking signs on Pickrell Road, fifteen mile an hour speed limit, uh, and that you will fence from the woods a distance of three hundred feet?
Sure.
Um, with Mike's suggestion of a chain link fence and ultimately tree plantings.
Sure, okay.
Um, I think I've covered the points here, um, yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
It is, it's a township road, the county has no right to tell the road authority what speed limit they can put on the road. You can put up, the township would be the ones responsible for any signage.
I wasn't designing who, but I was...
Yeah, I'm just advising you that the county has no control over that, is it a township road, they are the road authority for that road. You can put up cautionary signs, the yellow and black cautionary signs, fifteen mile per hour or whatever, but the county has no, no right to tell them what to set the speed limit at.
That would...
So do you have to work with the township?
Right.
This is Mike, Ken, I would suggest on the speed limit that we direct the county to work with the township and request fifteen mile an hour...
Okay.
And no parking signs, since it's ultimately the township's call on that.
Okay.
And I think the township would be happy to work with us, um, they're, they're really wanting this thing to happen, so, um, I think they're willing to work with us.
This is Mike, again, I think one of the conditions also needs to be hours.
Yes, that is correct, Mike, thank you, we have hours, and there's a few more things that I'd also like to highlight. Most of the parks around the area are half quiet hours, whether they're open only six AM to ten PM, you know, if we state something like that. Just need to have something on there as far as, and then again, that's going to have to be posted somewhere, so that...
Yep, and we could probably post that right on the picnic shelter or something, or on the entrance.
And, and you're proposing sunset, it closes at sunset?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Mike, what's the county use on other county parks?
It's ten o'clock at night, so...
Yeah, the one that I've recently reviewed was ten PM.
Are we gonna go with ten or sunset?
We can have discussion on that, whichever anyone's...
It's easier to specify a time, instead of everybody trying to keep track of it.
Mm-hmm.
And the most activity will probably be summertime when you're approaching the ten o'clock, and you...
I think ten, I, I would suggest the timeframe.
Right, yeah, I, again, when I looked at some other parks in the vicinity's, six AM to ten PM were the times, seven days a week. Would you be open to that type of...
Yeah, perfect, yeah, yep.
And how about any lighting? Are you going to have, you're gonna have a picnic shelter, and it's gonna be...
Not at this time, we don't have power or sewer or...
Right.
Any utilities into that area, if anything, it'd be solar, um, yep, that's only I think I could see, um, in the near future.
This is Mike, I, I don't believe we need to specify lighting, um, and, Madam Chair, also, I'd like to, I think we need to rework on number two, item four.
Yeah, that is correct, yes, item four, and then the dimensions of the parking lot. Dimensions of the parking lot on the application say one hundred by sixty-five. And that could include the playground, so I'm not, that's what I...
One hundred by one sixty-five?
That's what you have in your application.
Yeah, and that's, um, it, we don't need anything too big, it's just, um, a small little shelter with a twelve by twenty-foot pad, and then, um, a small little playground, that's all we're asking for with the parking spot for maybe five or ten cars, so...
And then on the possible, you're mentioning the number two conditions, correct? On the number four, on that, though, I mean...
Yes.
Number two with number four, yeah, that just needs to be slashed, as far as, or void, do we, would we look into considering voiding that variance application that went with the first CUP? Since it never got acted upon, it's not valid anyway, is that correct?
I think it's probably already passed its five years.
Okay.
So we just strike that item?
Yep.
This land, this variance is no one void, and so is this land use permit.
Okay. So you end the platform and you take it and defer out of it?
This is Veronica speaking, one of the concerns that I have for, as far as signage goes, is that something that we want to maybe possibly discuss on having a timeframe implemented, like when...
And that could include. The playground, so I'm not, that's what I.
One hundred by one sixty-five?
That's what you have in your application?
Yeah, yep, and that's, um, it, we don't need anything too big, it's just. Um, a small little shelter with a twelve by twenty foot pad and then, um. A small little playground, that's all we're asking for with the. Parking spot for maybe five or ten cars, so.
And then on the possible, you're mentioning the number two conditions, correct? On the number four, on that though, I mean, number two with number four, yeah, that just needs to be slashed as far as. Or void, do we, would we look into considering voiding that variance application that went with the first CUP? Since it never got acted upon, it's not valid anyway, is that correct?
It's probably already passed its five years.
Okay.
Will we just strike that item?
Yep. This variance is no one void and so is this land use permit.
Okay. So you end the platform and you take it out of it?
This is Veronica speaking, one of the concerns that I have, um, for as far as signage goes. Is that something that we want to maybe possibly discuss on having a timeframe implemented, like. When the operating permit is obtained, um, photo documentation could be provided to ESR, ESO. For any type of signage before we go too forward, I mean, just so that we're all, we're covered, especially with the boundary lines for the neighboring property.
I think, this is Mike, I think that's a good idea, I'd also like to put a, a timeframe on, on the fence and tree planting. I know if we leave that open. To me, it's problematic.
Corey, this is Veronica, can you, you mentioned a little while ago, maybe a timeframe, can you give us an idea? Of your plans at this time and any type of timeframe that you have?
We're hoping to get, uh, things squared away by next fall, so, um, cement slab probably next spring or summer. Uh, I budgeted for a, a small playground and a small little shelter, so hopefully next summer we'll get, working on that, so. Um, things should look, look to get done, yeah, by the summertime, so.
So then, since, since you have those items budgeted, so then. Definitely the boundary lines, the fencing should be maybe priority over the playground situation.
Yeah, yeah, yep, for sure. So even within a, a year, we should be able to get things, get things, good to go there.
Anybody else have any questions?
Fence and tree through by the end of next summer, is that what you're saying, a year?
Or we just, and it can also just have a, a deadline that we can say, you know, depending on what item they are and the conditions that. Item number blank and blank are to be implemented when the operating permit is, you know. Obtained. Do you plan on having any other signs saying that this is a park or is it, it's gonna have like, is it gonna say Garfield Lake Park, what is the name going to be?
Yeah, I, we were just saying in Garfield Lake Park, um. But, um, yeah, so we'll, uh, you know, there's, with other parks, there's always Google Maps that have this is a park or. Um, other online deals, but yeah, we'll have signs, um, hopefully work with the township and.
Well, and you're allowed to have a sign on the property as well, that's why I was just was asking.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Having a sign and you know.
Hmm, we'll have a sign at the entrance there.
All signage will have to be, you know, pertaining to the shoreline management ordinance and sizes, but.
And I believe. Is it thirty-nine or the highway to the, the west is a county road and I can work with the county to. You know, put a sign with an arrow that says County Park or, um, something similar to that.
This is Mike, um, we mentioned the fence, uh, a hundred feet, I believe, or a hundred and fifty feet, um.
Three hundred based on, that gets him down, so it screens his house. From the parking lot.
Right, I, I'm, do we want to include fence at the beach itself?
Well, there's already fence, uh, constructed from the neighboring property.
If that's sufficient, then.
Yeah, and the, the woods is very un.
Yeah, I, I agree with the woods, just, I wanted to just, for the record, state that there is a fence then in, in existence now.
On the beach side, closest to the lake, yeah, I don't have the, um, exact measurement of that.
And may I ask the, um, board if you can ask that concerned citizen if he'd rather have a privacy fence or chain link? I do. Yeah, I do kinda, I do wanna respect.
For wood or chain link, you're saying ask what he prefers?
Yeah, what he prefers chain link or wooden.
I'm, I'm fine with whatever, it's. I'm not, I'm fine with whatever, as long as there's something, otherwise the people are gonna walk across, I know for a fact they will, their dogs will come across.
Okay.
But what I would like to say is.
Well, that's, sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you there, okay?
So the key thing to Mike's point, a fence would be their choice, wood or chain link, but. But also a tree planting, which I think would ultimately be the right screening.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be definitely putting trees out there, so.
Okay.
Okay, so let's review if we could please some possible conditions, um, I have signs are to be placed near the neighboring property on. The fence line, um, for the, for the park patrons to know the boundaries. Um, also on during, on those same maybe signs, you could have your, your hours, your nighttime hours or your hours. Um, I also have a condition that. All signage pertaining to the proposed park must meet the shoreline management ordinance, signage ordinance. We have maybe work with the township for no parking signs on Pickle Road. Whether it's fifteen miles per hour speeds, again, that's something to work with the township and or cautionary signs along with the no parking.
So they work, they'd work with the township on no parking signs and the speed limit.
And, and or the cautionary signs that we've been advised to utilize if, you know, possibility. And then. The fencing, we have the condition for the fence, um, as far as whether it's going to be rope, chain, or. Privacy and then we have at least three hundred feet along with what type of plantings were you thinking?
I just.
Some kind of conifer that's.
I would, I would leave that to the county, but some type of conifer to provide screening, additional screening.
I would suggest spruce probably, the most sound barrier.
That entire three hundred feet, uh, like.
You'd be the expert.
Are there any other conditions, you, are you open to these?
Oh, yeah, yep.
The first three conditions with that one line out would also apply here, right?
Right, I haven't gone through those exactly yet, so yeah, and then the other conditions, this can. Additional use permit applications for the operation of the entire premises as one county park use venture. As such, any land through the subdivision or addition to the property to which the CUP is granted, is added or subtracted, is, is or are not granted or allowed. The right to operate in accordance with the CUP without first applying first four and obtaining the necessary CUP from the county. Then the number two, the CUP authorizes only the following improvements to be located on the property as described in this application. Site plan and as approved and, well, that's where we're gonna not, we're gonna strike that, cause there's.
You, you can read that as a vehicle parking lot approximately such and such and so and so.
Correct.
And then, uh, up two through three, twelve by twenty, or twelve by twenty by ten inch picnic shelter. On a concrete slab, period.
Right, so we're scratching those.
An existing ten, ten concrete platform and the following, so, okay.
Yeah. Cause the porta potty is not there and it is not on a platform, but you will have a porta potty.
Hmm.
Okay. And three is per, permit within two years is eight, okay. And then you're gonna add the one about parking and road signs and so on. And ten PM park hours.
Yep, six AM to ten PM.
A fence with screening trees. Okay, I think we got it.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion? With the conditions that we've discussed?
I'd make the motion, do you want me to read the, all of them then, or, um. How do you wanna, how do you want, I'll make a motion that we approve the condition, recommend approval of the conditional use permit to the county commissioners. With the three conditions listed in the staff report. While deleting item number four. Can I say it that way? And that there, item number four and number two, I mean, condition four and two. I won't be making sense here, there's a fourth condition that parking signs. Uh, no parking signs and speed limit signs and, uh, direct, or what's the third?
Cautionary signs.
Cautionary signs will be placed, um, will be requested by the county from the township. That park hours, uh, that, uh, closing time will be ten PM. And that the county will install a fence. And screening trees three hundred feet from wood line along the property line of the. Owner to the east.
So.
So, okay, yes, we're, okay.
Eric has a list here and those are, those are all pretty much appropriate for what we have, on number two, Eric, um, I think you've already got it scratched, I guess it looks good.
I'm just curious what number seven is.
Number of porta potties. How, how many have you had out there in the past and have they been sufficient?
Yeah, uh, two, two and they've been sufficient, they get, um, pumped or whatever once a week, so, um, it's worked out very well.
Property, there we go, yes, not by the beach, okay. Okay. The rest of that is okay. Should be six AM to ten PM, no parking signs on Pickle Road. Signs that require no parking.
This is Mike.
Not no parking signs.
I think number five needs to be no park, sides on, need to be requested, don't they?
Right.
Do we, the county has no.
Right.
Yep.
Right, that was the one that has a request to work with the township for no parking signs on Pickle Road, the fifteen mile an hour speed or and or the cautionary signs.
Must work with someone to look and place a no parking cautionary speed signs, uh, along, uh, Pickle Road, okay. So you're on a chain link fence from woods east to. On south property line.
That looks good.
Um, were we saying chain link or a, um, a fence?
Just a fence.
I think just a fence would be sufficient.
A fence, um, um, from woods. Southside property line. And tree planting, screening tree plantings along it.
And the last one would be what items need to be implemented when the operating permit is obtained? I think the fence, um, is definitely one that we wanna make sure we get up.
Isn't that covered up people, it's a two year per, two year period, failure to get you an operating permit.
That just means the whole CUP is automatically null and void.
They don't do it, okay.
If they don't do, if they don't apply for the operating permit, but we can also have. A condition that certain conditions have to be placed. By a certain timeframe. That's why I asked the applicant, you know, a timeframe on the park and.
Constructed by.
September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just ask, uh, what the signs to be placed on south property line, is that just, uh, don't?
Just basic, basically for the, to assure that the boundaries are, obviously the fence is gonna be very helpful.
Okay, okay.
I mean, just something that shows the side, you know, this is the boundaries for there, we can.
Park, county park stops here or something.
Exactly, yeah. Perfect.
Good.
Okay, does anybody care to make a second?
This is Larry, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken to recommend approval to the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners for the CUP with the. Recommend, the, uh, conditions that we have recommended and a second by Larry. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Madam Chair, did we also accept the findings and facts?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, that's right, but I, I think the second sentence in number two.
Has to be adjusted.
Where it says ten by ten concrete platform near the beach, that near the beach should be scrubbed on that, on that, um, finding of fact. And I think that's the only place that comes up when I scan through here. Oh, I have one other question, come to think about it, number twelve. Says are effect, are the affected public water suited to be able to safely accommodate types uses a number of watercraft and it says. The answer, the use will not involve any watercraft usage on Garfield Lake. Probably should say motorized. Cause I would see no reason why people bring a kayak or a canoe, they can't take it and take it off the beach. So if we were gonna do number twelve, the, the use will not involve any motorized watercraft usage of Garfield Lake.
Okay, we'll back up then, so we have a motion to recommend approval from Ken adopting the staff's findings of facts with the corrections. On number twelve and number two. And the following. Conditions that we have been given and a second by Larry, we'll vote starting over, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye, so, next step, county board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I, you want me to stick around or can I?
You're welcome to go.
Okay.
You're good to go.
Have a good night, guys.
You can watch if you want to.
That was it for the planning commission, next we will move on to the board of adjustment. First item we have will be the approval of the minutes, the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns on the minutes as presented? If not, anyone care to make a motion?
This is Larry, I move to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Larry.
This is Ken, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Ken, we have a motion by Larry to approve the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented, second by Ken. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye, the meeting minutes have been approved, there is no old business, so we'll go right into the new business. Variance application forty-five dash B dash twenty-four by Mitchell Blums and P L Stanley. Lot seven, Muskie Bay, section nine, township one forty, range thirty-three, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake. Parcel twenty-one point four seven point zero zero eight zero zero. Applicants are requesting an after the fact variance from section seven oh three of the shoreline management ordinance. For a lakeside deck on a non-conforming dwelling that exceeds the fifteen percent of the structure ordinary high watermark setback. Waterward allowance and is located within the thirty foot of the ordinary high watermark, do we have the applicants available? Perfect, you can go ahead and come to the presenter's table, please. Perfect, yes, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Patricia L P L Stanley, two four three five nine Fairwood Lane, Nevis.
Thank you, Patricia.
Mitchell Blums, same address.
Okay, thank you, sir, and go ahead and go ahead and give us a little bit about your request.
Um, we were planning to replace our current deck in the same configuration and location that it is. We applied for a permit to do so and, um. Environmental Services reviewed the permit request and we were told the prior owner had replaced what had already existed in two thousand seven. And it was permitted, however, it was discovered upon our permit request that it was not in compliance with SMO seven oh three point one. Our request for a permit was denied and we were advised to apply for a variance to replace the deck. Um, we were completely unaware it was not in compliance, it, a permit was issued, the deck was on when we purchased in twenty fifteen. Um, so we're requesting a variance to replace the existing deck, including the footings and intend to use no maintenance decking. The deck would be the same size, same layout, no changes to that. The deck does comprise eighty-five percent of our living space, it's a small cabin. Uh, and the deck is used extensively in the summer or in the warmer weather. The cabin would not be as functional without a deck.
Okay, thank you, Patricia, appreciate that. Okay, during the lot view, I, well, let me back up a little bit, so you. Okay, during the lot view, I, well, let me back up a little bit, so you purchased the place in December two thousand and fifteen. Have you done any other improvements to the exterior, any other permits issued?
No.
So, the concrete patio that's underneath the deck, the stamped concrete, was that there when you bought the house?
Yes.
All of it was?
All of it.
Okay. Thank you. Do you know what the dimensions are, I, I think I saw on there, this little, in front of the stairs, where the stairs come down on the lakeside towards the front, says it's ten and a half by eleven, is that correct?
Probably correct, that's close.
Okay, does anyone have any questions at this time, any board members?
Uh, no, I just, uh, just for confirmation, so to speak, the, um, they're proposing replacing the deck, which was built to the actual permit from two thousand and seven, except for the fact that the steps in the front facing the lake were not part of the original permit, that's what I understand.
That's correct, that is my interpretation as well.
Okay.
We don't have any other questions from the board members, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. And seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Have any written comment? So, the question that Ken had up with the stairway there, so the, what was approved prior, from a prior variance and land use permit was the deck, but the stairs were supposed to be on the side, on, of the deck, kind of like the ones that are already on the side towards the front.
Okay.
They were supposed to come out the side as well, so it's still in violation having the stairs there, unless we, you know, move forward with them there. Would you be open to just putting them on that same very side, like you have the other ones?
We would be open to that, we'd prefer to keep it the way it is.
This is Mike, um, I think one of the conditions, in, in my opinion, needs to be that the stairs be put off to the side, and I'd also like to see the concrete, uh, that runs, uh, parallel to the house, uh, and beyond the deck be removed. In view of the closeness to the lake, um, that's, that's a lot of impervious surface right next to the lake, and I would like to see that removed and more, uh, grass or turf established so that we have, uh, less impervious surface.
Mike, if I understand, if I look at the, um, posts, anything from the post or just in front of the post a little bit, out to the front and parallel to the deck, is what you're, you're suggesting be removed.
Parallel to the deck, I would still, the sidewalk leading down to the edge, you know, a, a short way, short distance where it is now, i- is fi- fine in my opinion, it's everything that's, uh, from the front of the deck, um, moving, uh, parallel to the house where that stair is, so it, it's cut off at the deck itself. Does that make sense?
Should be an L shape, the L shape around the deck.
Re- removed.
Mm-hmm, right, cause if the stairway gets turned in place where it's supposed to be by permit, there, there won't be a need for that.
Yeah, okay.
And that was my question with the platform, the stamped concrete, the ten and a half by eleven on the front, that is extended past the, underneath deck, so, some of my concerns as well with that.
And we're okay with the, uh, platform underneath the deck?
I am okay with the platform underneath the deck that doesn't exceed the deck, correct?
Yes.
And it doesn't go all the way, it's, it only goes to the, the larger half, the deck is kind of in two sections there. It's, um, to my, when I was there during lot views, where the wood is, there's not concrete patio. It's sand or dirt.
Last diagonal fifteen section.
Well, I, this is Veronica speaking, I'm in agreement that with Mike, the existing lakeside stairway must be relocated so that they come off of the side of the deck in order to further correct the violation from the two thousand and seven permit, one six one four seven. Also, I would like to see that ten and a half by eleven stamped concrete patio that extends beyond the footprint of the existing overhead deck to be removed and returned to a vegetative state. Again, with that extra sidewalk there, I, I agree, I think that sidewalk can also be, you know, removed as far as depending on where your stairs are gonna turn and land.
Well, we, we let them leave this entire one, this entire piece right to the end.
Correct, just the other.
And the deck would come off of the frontier.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And then I would also suggest that, uh, the condition number two, the one that with the concrete patio must be completed before the land use permit is obtained to replace the existing deck, that they have to remove that stuff first.
Did we do public comment?
I sure did.
We did.
Yeah, I was just gonna have some other supporting statements, um, cause I am in favor of replacing the deck. The lot was platted decades before the Shoreland Management Ordinance was adopted. Um, the residence on the lot was built in the mid nineteen sixties per the assessor records, and the structure measures twenty feet from the ordinary high watermark currently, so, the house, as the applicant described, the house is set up to where they utilize it as a smaller home, and they utilize a lot of that decking, so that extra space out there is nice even to have it on the whole length, the whole deck, the whole length of their house. So, yeah, anybody prepared to make a motion? If not, I can.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm prepared to make a motion, we accept the application with the, with the condition that the stairs on the lakeside of the deck, uh, um, be placed off to the side, and that the, uh, concrete walkway, uh, extending beyond the pillars on the deck, and around the s- current stairs be removed. Is that an adequate description?
Yep, or you can also say the ten, ten and a half by eleven stamped patio, that's the measurement given as well.
Okay, and, um, with that, also accept the, uh, staff's findings of fact.
And are you open to having them remove that before they get the land use permit to rebuild the deck?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Ken made a motion to approve the application, um, as per site plan as presented, with the following conditions, the existing lakeside stairway must be relocated so that they come off of the side of the deck. The stamped concrete patio that extends beyond the pillars, the footprint of the existing overhead deck must be removed along with the other sidewalk area and returned to vegetative state. And then number three, condition number two must be completed before the land use permit is obtained to replace the existing deck. Do I have a second?
This is Mike, I'll second the motion.
And Ken also adopted the staff's findings of facts. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye, your application has been approved. You'll get a letter from the Environmental Services Office, a decision letter in the next few days, giving you instructions on the next steps, getting your permits, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, next item on the agenda, variance application forty-six dash B dash twenty-four by Jerry and Charlene Christensen, part of government lot three, section twenty-four, township, township one forty-one, range thirty-five, Arago Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero two point two four point zero zero two zero zero. The applicants are requesting a variance from section five oh seven point four of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to exceed the four foot maximum fence height allowed within the one hundred foot ordinary high watermark structure setback. And hi, thank you, sir, now, go ahead and please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Shannon Hendrickson, I own Touch of Eden Landscaping, my address is sixteen oh four Commerce Avenue South, and I'm representing Jerry and Charlene Christensen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henderson, you can go ahead and give us a description of the variance request, please.
Basically, we're gonna be, we'd like to build a dog fence area that's roughly sixty by thirty off to the west of the house. After we had Cal come out, uh, we found out that the hundred foot setback, um, we wanted to make the fence six foot high for, for the dogs, just so they can't jump the fence, obviously. Um, we realized that the hundred foot setback, um, there's twenty-seven feet a lo- parallel along the west property line, and then fifty-three feet on the southernmost, uh, side of the fence would, would, uh, could only be four foot high based on the shoreline ordinance, so we're requesting that that be extended to two, six feet high instead of four feet high.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Anybody have any questions or concerns from lot views?
This is Veronica speaking, I noticed that we had a very long driveway, the nearest neighbor is quite some distance, it appears over four hundred feet away, so there's, we don't have any neighboring obstruction in the view from the neighbors.
I think the other point to make is that it's probably not visible from the lake either, it's, uh.
Correct, and you did say it's gonna be chain link style.
Chain link, correct.
Don't have any questions from the board members at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open for public comment. And seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Yes, Ken, during lot views, the, the fence would be pretty obscure, especially being chain link, it's not gonna be very noticeable. I agree. Any questions, comments, no, okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the variance application and accept the staff findings of fact.
Okay, thank you, Mike, we have a motion by Mike to approve the variance application as presented, as per site plan, and adopt staff's findings of facts.
This is Ken, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Ken has a second, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye, the application has been approved. You'll, you or the applicants will receive a decision letter from the Environmental Services Office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, variance application forty-seven dash V dash twenty-four by Mark Ludewis. Ludewis, thank you, sir, part of government lot one, section one, township one forty, range thirty-four, Henrietta Township on Boulder Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel thirteen point zero one point zero two seven one zero. The applicant is requesting after the fact variances from part one, section five oh two point two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a deck located within the one hundred foot ordinary high watermark setback, and part two, five oh two point two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a accessory structure located within the one hundred foot ordinary high watermark setback. Okay, thank you, sir, if you could please give us your name and address?
Sure, uh, Mark Ludewis, uh, address is four thirteen Fifteenth Street North, Coal Spring, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you, sir, and if you can go ahead and just give us, um, some information on your variance.
I closed on this property, uh, on July eighteenth of this year, and, uh, checked with the environmental office, uh, I don't know, probably three, four weeks afterwards to, uh, determine whether we could put a railing on this deck, cause it's an open deck and it's adjacent to the cabin, and, uh, we had onsite view of it and the measurements were taken, and we discovered that, uh, this deck, uh, is in the, within the hundred foot setback, and, uh, it's pretty clear that the previous owners didn't obtain a building permit when they put this in, but, uh, it appears that this deck has been there for probably twenty to twenty-five years, uh, so, I'm requesting, uh, of after the fact variance to, uh, retain the deck where it is. The cabin is only four hundred and fifty some square feet, so it's not a very big cabin, and again, the deck is, uh, used, utilized as living area during the summer months, and this is a seasonal cabin. And then also, we discovered that the, uh, storage building is also within the hundred foot, uh, setback, and, uh, uh, I think, uh, the board was out and viewed the property and see, saw that, you know, there is some benefit to having that structure where it is, rather than trying to move it up the hill to basically, uh, store tools and, uh, maintenance, uh, equipment for the lot.
Okay, thank you, sir, I have a quick question, if you don't mind. Do you plan on building, I know you just purchased this in July, but do you have any intentions?
We're, we're dealing with two, we're doing it in two parts.
Correct, yep, we'll do part one and part two.
Okay, we're talking about the deck first.
Yep, the deck first, so, the deck, do you have any intentions of adding or putting a, another deck on there, a different deck, uh, attached to the house, or?
All, all the, uh, the intention here is because of the way the deck sits, that it's safety concern for grandkids, that I wanted to put a railing on this deck. And, uh, there is stairways that comes off to the lakeside, and I would remove those stairs and this, enclose this area with a, kind of a wraparound railing with access towards the cabin door that's currently there. So there's only gonna be one exit point, and no change to the dimensions of, of the deck.
Are you rebuilding the deck?
No.
I'm just taking that front steps off, front.
Right. Currently, the material there is, uh, seems to be sound, and, uh, there's really no reason, and if you, you scroll the other way on that picture, uh.
This is Ken, and, another comment.
If you look where the cabin is, the next picture that, the other way.
The other way.
Okay, you can see that this deck is even further back from the cabin, and the cabin was built in nineteen fifty, so, uh, you can see that the deck doesn't extend out beyond where the cabin is, either, so.
Okay.
The, Veronica, the, I understand from the staff report that what makes this problematic is that it's not attached to the, uh, um, structure. And if it was, it probably could be permitted directly without a variance.
Correct, yeah.
Which is, what's unique is that it's not attached to the thing, to the house.
Yeah, I agree, thank you, Ken, for sharing that. Any other members have any questions or comments from lot views and the application?
This is Mike, uh, in regards to, can we talk about the shed, or do we wanna hold it to just the deck at this time?
Um.
Close out the deck.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just open for public comment, okay? For, open for public comment for this part one of the deck. And seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment for part one.
This is, this is Ken, I'm prepared to make a motion that we accept, uh, part one of this variance application, uh, with the condition that no additional deck can be added to the house, uh, and, uh, accept the findings of fact of the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Ken, Ken made a motion to approve part one of the deck, um, with the condition that no additional deck can be built per section seven oh three and attached to the cabin, and adopted the staff's findings of facts. Anyone care to have a second?
This is Larry, I'll second.
Okay, Larry made a second, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
This is, Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye, so part one of the deck has been approved to be retained. Now we'll go on to part two, the shed. And I'm gonna go ahead and just jump in and open for public comment for the, since we didn't have any on the deck. And no public comment then for the shed, I'll close public comment. During the lot views, this is Veronica speaking, I did notice that your property, I mean, it is kind of like terraced in three During the lot views, this is Veronica speaking, I did notice that your property, I mean, it is kinda like terraced in three different levels. You come in and you're up high, then you drive down, and you go around the loop, and you're going lower, and then you have to park, and then you have to go down again. I saw that the location, in my opinion, for the shed, being only eight by seven, it does exceed our water-oriented structure, but I don't see, there's not a garage on the, the property, correct? Okay, and if you do decide to build a garage, you'll do it by permit, and it's gonna be, yep, exactly. Uh, so, I, I don't have a problem with its position. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. I think if we move it up, then you're, you're moving it up to the next level. You could probably move it back behind those other side of those trees, but I think if I did anything, I would request that if the eight-by-shed, said, eight-by-seven shed must be removed to meet the ordinary high watermark setbacks if it's ever replaced or rebuilt. That would be the condition I would put on it, otherwise I would leave it in its place.
See the condition again?
If the eight-by-seven shed that's currently there be removed, um, to meet the ordinary high watermark setbacks if it is ever replaced or rebuilt.
Okay, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of what you're saying, uh, um, it's eighty-nine feet, and the lot is big enough, so to speak, to move it, but if you look at that, it's clearly in the right spot to, to have any kind of, uh, storage for water-related, uh, stuff. To go another one hundred and fifty feet or so up the hill, uh, to gain eleven feet, doesn't seem to make sense, and it's not obvious, you can just push it back ten or eleven feet, so I would, I'd be, and it's not visible from the lake, so I would personally be supportive of leaving it where it is, even though it does not meet the hundred-foot setback.
This is Tim, I agree as well.
Do you understand the condition that I mentioned, that if we ever need, if a tree falls on it, and it's like, oh, and you've just gotta move it back to where it should be and meet setbacks? Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that being said, uh, this is Veronica. I can make a motion to approve part two of the shed, and I will have the condition placed on it that the eight-by-seven shed must be removed to meet the ordinary high watermark setbacks if it is ever replaced or rebuilt. And then, the findings of fact, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? Yes, the lot is seventy thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet in size, hundred and eighty-five, hundred and eighty-four feet wide, and three hundred and sixty feet deep. Much of the property is sloped with the terrace levels towards, um, the lake, and allowing the small accessory structure near the cabin, placing it with conditions to meet setbacks if it is ever replaced, and is in harmony with the intent of the official controls. Number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner permitted by official controls? Yes, having a small accessory structure is a reasonable request, as there is not a garage on the property. Number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior owners. Yes, although, again, the lot is seventy thousand plus square feet, um, and the, uh, rear portion of the lot is relatively level, and there's room for a, uh, the shop. However, the lot is in the unique terrace-like sections, and retaining its current placement provides accessibility and is well-screened from the lake. And I will adopt staff's findings of facts, number four and number five. Anybody have a second?
I was only saying maybe under, um, condition two, is that it is not visible at all from the lake.
Okay, so, and then on the, um,
Reasonable manner.
Sure, yeah, and it is not visible from the lake, if we could add that into the findings of facts?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Larry, I'll second.
So, there was a motion by myself to approve the shed, part two of the application, um, as per the site plan, and then I had created the findings of facts for one, two, and three, adding Ken's, um, input for number two with the lake view, and then adopting staffs four and five, and we had a second by Larry. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. So, both of your applications have been approved. You will get a, a decision letter from Environmental Services Office, giving you the next steps on purchasing those land use permits. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, variance application forty-eight dash V dash twenty-four by Wayne Epperson, Jr., part of Government Lot Four, Section Thirty-five, Township One Forty-one, Range Thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Little Sand Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel sixteen point three five point zero two four zero zero. The applicant is requesting a variance from section nine oh two point one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for grading in a steep slope that will exceed the permissible volume. Okay, thank you. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon, I'm Curtis Toll, JT Builders. Our office address is two five four three eight County Road Thirty-three, Nevis, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you, sir. And you?
I'm Elizabeth Stark. Uh, my address is two two zero nine seven Finesse Drive, Park Rapids, Minnesota. I'm the wife to Wayne Epperson.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Okay, and go ahead and please give us a, uh, your description of your request.
So, JT Builders, Inc. is requesting a shoreline management ordinance nine oh two dot one dot B to complete construction of a new home on two two zero nine seven Finesse Drive, Park Rapids, Minnesota. After reviewing questions one through five of the variance application, we believe a shoreline management ordinance is necessary due to the steep slope, uh, steep slope of the lot, which will require about one hundred and thirty-four cubic yards of fill to achieve the necessary grade and drainage. We've included detailed drawings and notes to further explain the need for a shoreline management ordinance.
Okay, this is Veronica speaking. I have a couple of questions on the proposal for the house as well, for the size of the house. So, on, in the application, I can see where you're looking at a ten-foot side lot line. You're building it right next to the lot line there.
Correct.
What's the overhang?
So, sorry, that is from the overhang, the permit, it's a twelve feet, or, or, should be, that, that one might be three on that side of the house, might be three feet.
Okay, 'cause I was finding five in some areas, and three in others. Hard to read the small, small print on this.
Yeah, here, let me find it for you. I can't remember off the top of my head.
I thought I read five on that top one there, right?
I might have to pull out my phone and blow it up if it's too rough. No, it's not a five, it's not a five-foot overhang on that side. That's detailed out as a two-foot overhang.
Okay.
To be like, it'd be like east, southeast, northeast-ish on that side of the lot, on the right side of the screen shown.
But you are just very well aware that the measurement from the lot line is going to be from the overhang and not the side of the house.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and what is the size of the deck? I have fifty-two feet across, but I don't have the depth.
Of the patio?
This patio, yeah.
So, the patio is, is TBD on, on the size or depth, for example, for the width, should be fifty-two, I believe, off the top of my head. Have to check my notes. Yep. Um, the depth is kinda gonna be dictated a little bit by the bluff setback. There is kind of a unique angle that we are, if we hug the right side of this lot line, which we are, the, the front of that lot, I don't know if I can, maybe I can be, pull up a different picture, Eric, please. Maybe the one with the survey on it, hey? Is that one available? Okay, so, like, do you see where, like, bluff setback is?
Well, and that was my next question, is I see the bluff setback wording, but I don't see where your line is.
Well, is it not detailed on there?
I, unless I'm just not.
Yep, so it's not coming up on the scanned image here, so, if you can see.
Is it that line? There it is.
Yep, there it is.
Okay, it is there, okay.
So, it's kind of unique, um, how it's gonna, it's gonna dictate a lot of where we end up finding that grade, that top piece.
Okay.
Which, so I'm assuming it'll be eight, six to eight feet is what I'm thinking it'll be, but I, I will not know until we grade. It's too, it's too risky to give you an exact number right now.
This is Mike, but you're saying that the patio will meet the setback?
Yes, the patio will meet the setback, absolutely.
And that setback is the crest of the bluff, that's?
Thirty feet for the?
Thirty feet from the, yep, thirty feet from the, the, that's actually, what's drawn there is the setback itself. The bluff is,
Yeah.
That's, is further up, more maybe towards, it says fourteen sixty-five, I believe. Is that that number? Yeah, so it kinda goes in a horseshoe shape there, following his mouse. That, that's the bluff itself.
That line there, okay. Okay, I didn't, okay.
What, what's your estimate approximately what the dimensions of the patio are? How far extending from the house? Is it like ten feet?
Yeah, ten feet would be maximum, so, but.
And the arc, the arc would go out a little bit farther when you arc around it?
Even if the arc is not there, it doesn't really, I mean, whatever constitutes where we can be at from that setback, if, if we're a little further back and the patio shrinks to eight, great, it doesn't really, it's not gonna really sway the whole deal at all. It's more of a where we can lay this thing out without pushing too much fill around, to be perfectly honest with you. 'Cause where the patio is, is the flattest spot on the lot when we were out there, where it's shown. From like the patio to where it's darker there is the flattest spot on the entire place. So, ideally, you know, with honoring that bluff setback, we could, you know, push it more this way and lose fill, but I, I don't think that's the right move. I think honoring that setback and then moving back this way is probably the better, better of the two options.
Now, to make this a building site, you're, you're peeling off two, about two to three feet of, um, soil and filling in on the, on the downside here to the left, as I look at this.
Yeah, if we have a color-coded one up there, it kinda shows you the tiers. We'll strip off roughly two foot six. I had my laser out there. That seemed to be the best, uh, indication of grade. Um, it gets a little heavier towards E, um, but that would be the green and blue and purple is all retained by foundation, along with A. So, that's all fill that's retained by our frost footings and then brought up to grade. So, there's no real fill on the outside. The only real fill on the outside is E and part of D, and that's just for that apron we had, you know, walked through. But, zone A is.
My only comment was that it's not ten feet deep or anything. It's a couple, couple, three feet. A question for the owner?
Yes.
What's your thoughts about how you're going to access the lake?
On the west side?
Yeah, the two hundred feet from the buildings, you know, it's a very steep, uh, I don't know how far it goes down. It's probably a hundred feet, maybe. How do you, how do you plan to get down there? Are you gonna build the steps?
Well, eventually. I mean, right now, we will not be. We primarily use the lake of the neighbor, very good friends, so our boats and everything are on her property right now.
I just see that as problematic in the long, long term, but, um.
I'm sure we'll be back in front of you.
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
What part would be problematic, is that you're saying, if I may ask?
I, I can just see a lift, and, uh, stairs, uh, switchback stairs, uh, a lot of disruption on that bluff in order for you to have access in the long haul, versus what might be allowed by the ordinance. Have you thought about anyplace else farther away back? You, you own that, uh, big shed at the bottom of the hill, yeah, there, and there's a lot of area there. Have you thought about trying to build down there lower?
Then the access to the lake would even be more difficult.
Well, access to the lake is, yeah, I, I'm just saying, I don't see necessarily the advantage to building on that crest, uh, 'cause it, in terms of viewing the lake or access the lake or anything like that, it'd be a lot less disruptive if you could build more down where the shed is. I'm, I'm just.
Well, sir, the, the idea would be the view there on, on top, and obviously, viewing the lake would be, um, probably priority number one, with access to the lake being probably number two.
Absolutely.
I worked a lot of hard years in a maximum security prison to retire here.
Retire what?
I worked a lot of years in a maximum security prison
Oh, okay.
to retire here.
Yeah.
I do wanna see the lake.
Okay. How much vegetation? You're gonna have to cut down to see the lake.
I don't wanna cut down much, because you can actually see it, standing up there currently, and not remove anything.
This is Veronica speaking. What, that was another thing I had questioned here, is the height of the structure. I know it's kind of, you've got a, a section where it's gonna be built, so you've got some natural light coming in, but what is the actual, the highest point?
I know the highest point in interior is seventeen-foot wall.
So, it'd be roughly like nineteen-six, I think it is.
This is all one level, though, right, or two?
Yes, it is all the.
Correct, it's one level. It's a slab.
Okay, that's what I thought, so. So, the height is, we're determining nineteen-six by your application here?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's nineteen-six. It's not called out on the CAD, but that's what, if you do the rise and run, will be.
So, I don't have any other questions from the board. I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. Okay, and seeing no open, or no public comment, I'll close public comment. I thought I read somewhere in your application on the storm water management plan and the building such. Maybe some more information about what you're proposing, 'cause I think, I read somewhere that had something to do with a boat ramp and walking path to get down there.
That, no, that's not in our application.
No, okay, 'cause I thought, that's why I was trying to figure out.
For this, is that what you're looking for? What's a storm water?
Yeah, there was something else that I read in small print, though.
Yeah, we have a storm water management plan. It might have been maybe in that Microsoft Excel, but we did not, I added in the driveways and landscaping as part of impervious coverage.
Yeah, and that might have been where I read that.
Yep, so like that was just an area of impervious, can calculate how much for storm water management.
If I may, Madam Chair, I think I've got the cursor on that.
Oh, yep, that's where I read it.
This is a template
Okay.
that probably is just listing examples
Okay.
of what would fit in that fill-in-the-blank section there.
Okay, thank you, 'cause that's, I was, those were my next questions, was what you were planning on there, so, since that was included, so.
Yeah, sorry, that's, this is actually, uh, how Crow Wing County does it in the city of Cross Lake. We have to fill this out for storm water management on each permit we pull.
Sure, and it just had all that already?
Yeah, it just kinda does the calculation for you, and Eric thought it was great when I brought it to him, and it is, it does do a good job of laying out how much impervious, and then.
Sure, it just raised questions, waited a while.
Sure, sorry about that. I didn't mean not to.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Eric, for the clarification. I, I knew I'd read it somewhere.
And then on the bottom, it does give you a, a one-inch rain tube of how many square foot your roof is. So, you can kinda calculate how much water you're having, so you can retain, which we showed you on one of the pictures. I can't remember which one it is right off the top of my head, but there'll be, to the west, a rain barrel that's thousand gallon, nine hundred, actually, but thousand gallon that's perforated, that'll be buried. Drain channel chenched to it, because that is the kind of point of concern of water. But, the nice thing about having a big shed mono roof leaning that way, is we can trap all that water on a five-to-six inch gutter, send it in there, and get it back into the earth with good vegetation on top, so.
I have another question, if you don't mind, please. So, you currently live in the shop that's behind?
And the trailer, kind of, we're just making it work until we can have a home, yes.
Okay, and so there, that, when you mentioned, like, camper trailer, or were you mentioning, like, a, okay?
Camper trailer.
So, there's a driveway, you have to share the driveway with the neighboring properties, then? Is that how, or is that how the neighbors get to your other properties? It seemed like I could go further when I was at lot views. I wasn't at the same time, the gentleman were.
There is a variance when we bought the property, that the neighbor can use that cross.
To get to this house that's over. To get to this house that's over here, and then that one down there?
Towards the lake. That one on.
Okay, what is this, I mean, so that little building that's with that other one on the neighboring property, that's not?
That's not ours.
Okay. So they can.
And that's just because their driveway has a lot of turns.
They have a variance to get it there.
It grows there, yeah.
That variance has been there for many, many years.
But they don't ever really utilize it to go that far?
They've used it to go across, um, yes, because their driveway, the way their driveway is.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's difficult to get like a, anything wide.
Sure, okay.
This is Mike, we're referring to an easement, not a.
Yeah, easement, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, that's okay, yeah.
So, so then when I was there, so the blue on the screen that you see that's in front, is that just like a little trailer, or or is that just like a little building? That other little building there, do you see this?
Yeah, the blue line by the, to the right of the shed.
Yeah, what is, no, yeah, right there, no, to the left.
Remember anything there?
Oh, you know what, it's probably one of our boats.
Okay, just the boat with the covers, okay.
Blue tarp.
Yep.
Yeah, it is, it's our fishing boat.
Right, so I just, when I was there, I, there was
Yeah.
Didn't know if I could go that way further, I just saw that house or that other cabin, I was like, okay, where do I stop, so.
No, that's a fishing boat.
So you have living quarters in this shop then? No.
No.
Okay, you're, okay. That was just my next question, if you have living quarters there and you're living there, so when did you purchase this lot?
It's on the deed, I believe, hang on.
Yeah, I can find it. Two thousand and one.
Uh, two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen.
Okay. Perfect, okay. Any other questions from the board members? I was just trying to just, since I wasn't at Lot Views, I just wanted to see if there were living quarters. When I was there, there was a red truck, and there was another truck, but nobody came to any doors, so.
Yeah.
I was just trying to see where everybody was at and.
Nobody was there.
Any other questions or comments? Concerns? Opinions? Well, this is Veronica speaking, if we do move forward approving anything, I would just highly suggest that, um, a condition be placed that the storm management, the storm water management plan be included in the variance application, and it must be implemented.
Picture documentary as we're doing it, cause it comes in at separate times, just want photographs, or do you want someone to come review it?
That can be determined from the ESO, it's just definitely, you know.
Yeah, following up on us making sure we're doing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Wasn't it, Eric, any, from a staff standpoint, any, any observations or thoughts after seeing the property?
I think they've done a good job of citing it in, uh, the most workable location on that side of the property and building elsewhere on the lot would mean essentially south of that pole barn, which doesn't really work for a lake lot, so I think the amount of excavation and fill that they need to make the house site work is reasonable.
And this is Veronica speaking, and it appears that we have suitable septic, there seems to be septic information provided. Do we have an alternate as well, or only the one?
For the septic design? Just the one we have right now. If you would like another, I can have Don design a different style, but as far as the soil's checked out, that's what, um, he recommended.
I, I think what we're referring to here is an alternate site for when this one fails.
Oh, yes, so if you parallel down with your mouse towards the ninety-three foot mark, we have more area there, all the way through there, right, yep, we can do a whole nother drain field right there. That's underscaled.
This is Mike, um, I think it's a well-thought-out plan, I'm, I'm in agreement, uh, with Eric and, and also Veronica, that the storm water management plan be implemented in view of what could be done and has been done, I, again, I think it's well-thought-up and, and I don't see any impacts to the lake with this building. Down the road, we'll probably revisit it when we're looking at lake access of a walkway or a lift or something of that sort, but they also are allowed by permit to have lake access, even on the bluff, if they meet, uh, the current SMO requirement, so I'm in, I'm in favor of this application with the condition.
Well, we're really way down here. These are well down the hill.
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay.
This is Veronica speaking, Eric, do they need to have an alternate site on this application?
I'd have to look at things that I don't have the information readily available, so I can't say, but there is one shown right here on the design.
Just that's about all we have on there, okay.
The lot's large enough, I'm sure there's.
Yeah, plenty of room. I'm open for a motion, if anyone's prepared.
This is Mike, I'll make the motion that we approve the request on variance forty-eight V twenty-four, uh, with the condition that the storm water management plan must be implemented as a condition to this variance. Uh, and as far as the findings of fact, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? Say yes, it's reasonable to have your home with a, a lake home on a lot with a view of the lake, and the plan is well-thought-of, uh, keeping it far, uh, from, uh, the required distances and then some from the bluff line. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? Yes, a home, uh, on this lot is, is reasonable, and with the, uh, plan that's, uh, proposed, uh, I believe it's reasonable. Is the need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? Yes, it's a complicated lot with, uh, different dimensions, uh, widths, um, going from the lake going back, it's a deep lot, uh, and with bluff and steep slopes, uh, so it was, the lot itself, it's not created by the owner. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes. Uh, the house is well-screened from, uh, neighbors and from the lake, uh, and it's, uh, essentially a residential area now. And accept number five on the staff's findings.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mike made a motion to approve the application as presented per the site plan, with the condition that the shoreline management, or I'm sorry, the storm water management plan included in the variance application must be implemented, and he created the staff's, or the findings of facts from one through four, and adopted staff's number five. Do I have a second?
This is Larry, I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Larry. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. Your application has been approved, you will be receiving a decision letter from the Environmental Services Office with the next steps for your application, okay?
Thank you, guys. Uh, one quick question, on the condition that you requested, which I agree with, h- how do you want to do that? Cause it can be fairly simple, if, I have a few ideas, like as we're putting it in as we go.
The storm water management?
Yeah, just documentation.
Yeah, you can discuss that with Environmental Services Office if you'd like, and do you wanna give them any indication now, or?
Take photos, and let us know along the way if there's something that would be covered up that we wouldn't be able to see
Yeah.
after it was covered that we could run out and take a look at.
And then you can see it function too, at the end, when it's all working together, can't really hide that part of it, so, okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, good question, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda, variance application forty-nine dash B dash twenty-four by Corey Akis, part of the east half of the northeast quarter, section eight, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-five, Straight River Township, parcel twenty-five point zero eight point zero zero two one zero. The applicant is requesting a variance from section four of the subdivision ordinance to subdivide a property by administrative subdivision within the five years of prior administrative subdivision. Okay, thank you, sir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Corey Akis, one-one-six-three-seven, one hundred and fiftieth street, Parker Rapids, Minnesota.
Thank you, sir, and just again, go ahead with the request, I'm.
You know, I submitted, you know, in writing, I can cover that piece by piece if you'd like, or.
Just a brief description of what you'd like to do, and, and why you're there, and what happened, and, you know.
Um, I purchased a neighboring property, thirty-one acres, next to my residence, and the previous owner had developed, sold some lots roughly fifteen years ago, and then four years ago, he sold a couple of more, and, um, so his, uh, the wife, you know, went into the nursing home, you know, so for financial purposes, he asked me if I was interested in buying, which I was, so, um, we did a purchase agreement, and then I found out that, um, there's a stipulation on his part that he has to wait, the, the five years wasn't up on his piece before he could sell, but they would give him an exception if I merged, um, apparently he could sell to a neighbor, but I was forced to merge that piece into my existing piece, I simply wanted a standalone parcel. And for, for the main reason, I ju, I don't wanna combine it with my existing, with my house, that's where I have my mortgage. My mortgage is for my home and a specific amount of acreage, and then now to be forced to add thirty-one acres to it, can screw things up. And, but that was the only, you know, stipulation there was, plus I was forced to pay my property taxes in advance, which I already paid them once, cause they're escrowed, but they're making me pay my residential taxes once, and, and the whole purpose of this, this ordinance doesn't seem reasonable. I know this ordinance was, was developed years ago for the unscrupulous developer. And I can assure you, I'm not the reckless, fast and furious developer here. And the other issue is, there's a neighbor kid from Carter's Redwagon Farm who initially asked to purchase five acres from Mr. and Mrs. Town. And then when, I think they found out he really couldn't, cause of the five-year deal, but I could, he asked if he could buy five from me. Well, I can't sell that because the previous owner's five-year thing now applies to me. So, again, um, the purpose and intent, which, which I wanna cover, when you look at the purpose and intent of this ordinance, um, there's six things when this went into effect. One is to protect and provide for public health, safety, and general welfare of the county. You know, which is very understandable for any ordinance, any law, but none of that is jeopardized by my request. Number two, safeguard the best interests of the public, the homeowner, the subdivider, and the investor. This situation does not hurt the public in any way. There is no homeowner, okay, cause there's no buildings on this parcel, the one that I purchased. The bet, best interest of me is to allow my request, and the buyer benefits by this, which would be the neighbor kid, by simply have, being able to buy a piece of property next to the family farm. Number three, encourage well-planned subdivisions by the establishment of uniform procedures and adequate standards for design and construction in order that the new subdivisions will be integrated with the Hubbard County Land Use Plan and general plans for the community thereby, and I wanna stress, contributing toward an attractive, orderly, stable, and wholesome community environment. All very good reasons, but again, granting my request, you will not be trampling on any of that whatsoever. Number four, establish reasonable standards of design and procedures for subdivisions and re-subdivisions in order to further the orderly layout and use of land, and to ensure proper legal descriptions and monumenting of subdivided land. Nowhere in there does it explain how forcing me to merge parcels and to wait another year to sell is truly reasonable. Number five, implement land subdivisions in accordance with the Hubbard County Land Use Plan. A plan that specifically says I must merge the two parcels, and no plan that makes a previous owner's restrictions are now my issue. I don't know that that is even in the ordinance. Forcing me to do this because I'm a neighbor, so then I'm subject to further restrictions. Prepaying taxes, merging parcels. Um, then the final deal was prevent the pollution of air, streams, and lakes to ensure the adequacy of drainage facilities, protect underwater, underground water sources, and encourage the wi, wise use and management of natural resources in order to preserve the integrity, stability, and beauty of the county. Obviously, all are very important, um, which obviously pertains to shoreline and septics, and is not pertinent in this case. So, my deal is simply, what is reasonable under this ordinance? You know, being forced to merge the two parcels, you know, I think is, is a reasonable requirement, and then also not allowing me to be able to sell a five-acre parcel to the neighbor kid that is, the, the piece is an L-shaped piece, the parcel that I'm looking at is the one that borders County Road fifteen, and, uh, it would be like a five-acre parcel is what we're looking at.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Akis.
I get lost following the dots for the history of this thing. And so, to come to the, so I have a couple of questions, you do not intend to do any further development of the remainder part?
No, not at all.
Not at all, so you're simply saying I wanna sell five plus or minus acres, uh, keep the remainder, and I'd like not to have to combine it with my property, that's the bottom line?
That's exactly what I mean, yep, it's a hunting parcel that, that, it's all wooded, that borders my existing property and no other development whatsoever, no.
Okay. Question.
Yep, thank you, that was a good question. So again, just to clarify, you, the boundary lot line adjustment, that is what you had to do in order to purchase this from them.
I believe that's what it was called, correct?
Yep, okay, and then, but you didn't really want to do that because it's added to your home, that, you know, your residential structure, so you're and in lieu of waiting one year, you would like it to be separated currently, plus moving that five acres to the Carters, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any other questions at this time from the members?
This is Mike, I'll just make a statement, um, I appreciate all your rationale and reasoning. We as a board get to deal what's what in front of us until such time that the county decides to change the ordinance. But I see this as fairly straightforward and, and am in favor of this application.
Okay, before we go any further, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. And seeing no public comment, I will close public comments, I don't believe we had any written comment either. I, I agree, I agree with Mike, and yes, we've had a few of these that we've dealt with, that with that five-year waiting period, which we completely understand is necessary for some people, you know, to keep that down and have them go through the proper applications. Uh, I don't see a reason that we couldn't move forward with this one as well. I'm, I had the same similar question prior to a different, um, administrative subdivision, like you had mentioned, whether we had it for the applicant, or the new owners, or the old owners, the pre, previous owners, which yes, it's, it falls to the property unfortunately, and not to the owners, but I could see where it could be beneficial if it wasn't that way, so that's definitely something to look forward to in the future if we change things, or when things get amended maybe. Any other questions? Anybody ready for a motion?
This is Mike, I'll make the motion that we accept a variance application.
Okay, and do you want to adopt the staff's findings, Mike?
Adopt the staff findings of fact, yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Mike to, um, approve the application and adopt the staff's findings of facts. Anyone have a second?
I just wanna clarify, the application includes both. The application includes both approval for him to sell five plus or minus acres and not to have to combine it with his, that's in the application. Okay.
That's great.
This is Larry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike to approve the application, adopts the staff's findings of facts. Larry seconded the motion. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. The application has been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, variance application fifty-v dash twenty-four by Pat and Nancy Ryan, lots eight, nine, and part of lot ten, Block A, Shorewood. Section twenty-six, Township 141, Range 34, Lake Emma Township on Big Sand Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 16.42.00500. The applicants are requesting a variance from section 702 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed expansion of a non-conforming dwelling located in the bluff impact zone. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Ryan. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Nancy Ryan, 20087 Glen Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick Ryan, 20087 Glen Drive.
Okay, thank you. And if you could just go ahead and give us a brief description of your request.
Yes, we have a one-hundred-year-old log cabin, which naturally, when it was built, there were no restrictions about bluffs or setbacks or anything like that. Our cabin is not set back quite far enough, so anything we want to do to it, we need to get a variance. It was built originally as a hunting lodge, and the kitchen is teeny-tiny, and the bathroom situation is not great. We haven't done much to it. We've owned it for thirty-seven years. So, we would like to add an entryway, because when you first walk in, it's right in the kitchen, right by the stove, and very tiny. We'd like to add an entryway, a place you can hang coats, a place you can put your shoes, and a little powder room, and an entry to make the kitchen more expansive. And then also, it only has one bedroom, so we would like to add an entryway from the, the front door when you go in. It's, I think it's fourteen by, I'm sorry. I know you have the plans there with you, yeah. We have the dimensions on there. It's, they're twelve, let's see, I can't read that. I should have this in front of me. Twelve across by...
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
I have a twelve by thirteen and a sixteen by eighteen.
Sixteen by eighteen and the others.
Yeah, okay. I can't, I can't great read that. I should have it in front of me. But anyway, a small addition on that side of the cabin, away from the lake, it's, it's not going to go any closer to the lake. It's away from the lake toward the forest. And on the other side, we would like to add a closet for our bedroom, a bathroom on that side, and a laundry room. We're having more health issues as we get older, and right now, our laundry room is in the basement. My husband has to put his clothes in the basement, and we have a little bit of trouble sometimes with the stairs. So, just wanted to get that all on one level as we get older. And that addition is a little bit larger than the other one. If you can see, I think it's eighteen by fourteen, something like that. Anyway, I don't have neighbors that would have a view impacted. We own a lot on the other side of us, and our other neighbors are ahead of us. So, anyway, that's kind of what we would like to be able to do.
Also wheelchair accessible.
Yeah, well, health problems.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, this is Ken. For clarification, can you go back here to the previous weight drawing where it shows the bluff zone? Yeah, okay. This could be done by permit, except for the fact, one little triangular shape corner of the house is in the thirty-foot setback from the bluff. It's non-conforming. Otherwise, you could, you could have approved these by...
With the permit, yeah.
Permit, is that true? Okay, so they're, they're quote only having to come here because there's a slight non-conformance. On any other kind of issues with regards to the property and so on, there are, there are another issues. Yeah, okay.
This is Mike. I believe this is a fairly straightforward request. Part of the reasons, just what Ken was stating on the bluff there. And on the site visit, you could see that there, it has been, the way this house is maintained and, and the front of the home towards the lake, there is no impacts that are obvious, if any affecting the lake, and these additions won't affect anything on the lake either.
Okay, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Ken. I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. And I'm going to close public comment, seeing none. And I didn't see anything for a written comment. I just do have a couple, I agree with both of you as far as it's pretty straightforward, simple, and the need for the variance is due to that setback from the crest of the bluff. You did have a, a variance back in 2015 that you applied for and approved. It was approved, and it was for something much larger than this, but you didn't act upon it, so it became null and void.
Right.
And so, and this particular variance then is actually, a request is actually a little bit smaller than you've, since it's one level?
Yes, yes, it is. The other one, we got the builder out there, and he took one look at the plans, and he said, well, your fireplace will never work if you do this.
If you do that, yeah, okay.
He said, okay.
And so, and your compliance inspection shows that you have room for a three-bedroom septic system. You do have the guest cabin there. Do those all go into the same septic? You've got to...
That all goes into the same, yeah.
So, is this bedroom addition then going to create any problems with this septic? Do we need to...
I don't think so. It's just a bathroom and a laundry room moved upstairs. If we're not putting another bedroom...
No more bedrooms then?
Yeah, no more bedrooms.
Okay. My misunderstanding there, so, okay. Okay. Yeah, I agree. I don't see any issues with that. The two proposed additions to the cabin are reasonable in size. It's on the non-lake side of the house, so... Anybody ready for, to make a motion?
This is Ken. I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we accept application variance number fifty-v dash twenty-four, and that we accept the findings of fact from the staff.
Okay. We have a motion from Ken to approve the application as per site plan as presented, and approve the, or adopt the staff's findings of facts. Do I have a second?
This is Mike, I'll second the motion.
Okay, and a second by Mike. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. Your application has been approved, and you will be receiving a decision letter from the Environmental Services Office within the next few days, giving you the next steps on getting your application.
Okay?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, variance application fifty-one-v dash twenty-four by Michael and Ann Cummins, part of Government Lot Four, Section Six, Township 141, Range 33, Mantrap Township, and part of Government Lot Eight, Section Thirty-One, Township 142, Range 33, Thorpe Township on Mantrap Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcels twenty-point-oh-six-point-zero-one-nine-zero-zero and twenty-six-point-three-one-point-zero-one-zero-zero. The applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Part One, Section 502.2 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for an accessory structure to be located within the one-hundred-foot ordinary high watermark setback and the ten-foot side lot line setbacks. Part Two, Section 502.2 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a platform to be located within the one-hundred-foot ordinary high watermark setback. And Part Three, Section 502.2 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for an accessory structure to be located within the hundred-foot ordinary high watermark setback. Thank you for coming to the presenter's table. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening. Ann Cummins, 27994 Island View Drive, Parker Rapids.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And if you could go ahead and give us a description of your after-the-fact requests?
Yes, it's long. We purchased the property in March of 2021. There was already a gazebo and the pavers there, as well as a, in the pictures, you can see there was already a tarp, kind of like garage shed there. And basically, that shed started in twenty-twenty-two. It started falling apart. There was, a tree kind of fell on it and fell through the tarp, so we decided to replace that shed with a more permanent, nicer-looking structure. We literally put it in the same exact spot as it was. Now, that was our bad, because our, the company we hired did not pull a permit, and I guess the original owners did never, that shed was never permitted. Had they done that, they would have realized that it was on top of a drain field and also on not ten-feet lot setback. So, because of that, somebody realized that and brought it to our attention, so now we're trying to rectify the situation, move it off the drain field, and try to get as close as we can to the ten-foot lot setback. And then the original high watermark is another issue with all three of the structures. However, we're not very close to the water. I think if you went out to the lot, you could see that it's close. And then the last, another thing was the impervious surface. So, we did do some work already and pull off what we believe is enough to be under the twenty, you know, twenty-five percent. I think we were at twenty-six something. So, at this time, we're just requesting some variances.
Yeah, to request, just to keep everything else in place. Quick question, this is Veronica speaking. Before we get started, there's nobody in the audience, but for the record, I need to open public comment and close public comment. We'll get that done. The little shed there.
Before you go, do, do we want to handle all three parts of this as one application, or do we want to split it at all? You know, there's, there's one that has, you know, there's a paver platform and gazebo is one, one element, and the shed is another one. It's up to, up to you as to whether you want to split them or not. I don't know what, or what, you know, colleagues want.
Does anybody have any concerns on retaining the entire application as one, or if we, do we want to split it up into separate sections? I think at this time, we could just kind of move forward and see how we go with after discussion, okay? We'll just kind of go, see how it goes with discussion first. This is Veronica speaking again. So, during lot views while I was there, the gentleman said the smaller, the smallest shed.
We call it the fish shed, yes.
Yeah, that one there.
Yep.
Yep. So, that one, there is not any, any information on this application about retaining it. So, in my opinion, listening to that or reading the application, it's going to be removed off of the lot.
At this time, we plan on, we have to remove it and putting it on the neighbor's lot if they want it. I don't know what to, exactly what we're going to do, but...
I just wanted to make sure I hear from you what the plans were for that piece.
It can't be there, obviously, if the shed gets approved, so you have to move it off the lot. Be great if we could keep it, but I, obviously, that would be another variance request.
This is Ken. You did build that no, steel shed?
Well, we didn't. We hired a company to build it.
Yeah, but I mean, it was built after you bought, you did that.
After, yes. We put it in...
And any reason why you did not get a building permit?
I thought the company that we hired did. And they said they didn't pull a permit because they believed, because they literally put it in the, you can see the shape. We did the same exact dimensions of what already was there. There's a picture of it and things, so they thought it was already permitted, so...
Yeah, I can understand that, but I don't know about the previous structure, but your new structure was built across the property line. I would think that they would be...
I agree.
Even without a permit, and that you too, because apparently, that property line is very well marked.
I, I honestly don't know exactly how it all happened. But even if you can look at, in one of the sketches, it literally was, there was a, I think it was a night merge, that one. I don't know if the date is on there, but it, it was done with that shed, and that wasn't our shed. So, whoever actually put that shed on there already had done that.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know how it got misplaced, misrepresented, but regardless, we're trying to fix it and put it in a proper location off that drain field as well. So, yes, it should not have been there.
Now, you're proposing moving that shed, but there's some question as to actually what its setback is from the property line? Do we know for sure? It was hard for us to know?
Yes. It should be about seven feet. So, we are asking for a three-foot variance. So, it's supposed to be a ten-foot lot setback. It should be about seven feet, so we need about three feet that we won't be able to be. We do have a letter from that current owner giving us information, saying that they're okay with that. It's also in there somewhere, too.
You, so you have hidden information from your neighbor to the right, as I would look at it here?
Yep, where, where it actually is on their property right now.
A written document?
Is it in this application?
It should be all the way, probably, if you keep on scrolling.
Maybe I didn't see that. Okay.
I have the actual copy here, too.
I missed it.
That's how I know.
It might be way down there. There's a lot. We've lost a, a septic system from all of this. It's just become a...
What's the purpose for the shed?
Well, just for storage, that's the letter. Storage. We don't have any storage. It's two small cabins. This used to be a resort. It's a regular lot, and there's no storage. They're very small.
When you say storage, what, what...
He wants to maybe put one of his boats in there and just his tools, et cetera. Now, if we're going to lose that other shed, that's where all of our tools and such are.
What, what do you do with all your, your watercraft in the wintertime?
One of them, we take to town to store, and then the other one, we take to, take back home, the store. We live in the cities. And the other, that's why we wanted to have one up here.
Just seems, given the small size of your property, that, that large of a shed placed there, which doesn't match the other structures, seems to be excessive from my standpoint. Is there a reason you couldn't reduce the size?
It's the same size it was for.
Reduce the size a little bit to, to meet the setbacks?
I don't know. It's already kind of put together. I'm not, and it has a, like a garage, like, it doesn't, no, no flooring or anything like that, but the garage door was wide enough to be able to put our boat in there, and we used the same footing that was already there from the tent.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is, this is Steve, the county commissioner. I did receive email communication about this from one individual. I don't know if it's your adjacent property owner or not. I didn't bring my, my emails with me today. But just that they desired that things be, that all of the requirements be met for setbacks and so forth. Like I said, I don't know if it was the adjacent property owner or not. I can't speak to that right offhand, but just that they were, they were concerned that violations that occurred, you know, if you let one go, you're going to let everybody go, of course, is the statements that, that they made. But they just desired everything to be meeting all setbacks that were required.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that input. I, we also have received written comments, and thank you for sharing the comment, the written documentation you had from your neighboring property. We also had other comments from other neighboring properties.
I know what you're referring to as well, and he's...
Opposed, so, yeah.
He's also commented on, on everybody's practically around the neighborhood. He's also commented on, on everybody's practically around the neighborhood.
During the lot views, was there, did we determine that the shed could be moved inside the property line anyhow? It could be moved just a little bit and off of that, away from that septic? Is that what we determined while we were there? The metal, the new metal shed, yeah.
Well, from what I've read and everything, where they want to move it gets it off the drain field, uh, but it doesn't meet lake setback or side setback. And I think the write-up indicates they would remove that small shed.
Correct, the small one.
Large is the property next door. It seemed it was kind of a cabin sitting there, but a lot of open space.
The lot, yeah.
Where are we here?
To the north or the?
Were there two pieces again, like the other?
Yes, floor up and, and mantra, yep.
Can you repeat that, Eric? Sorry.
Roughly eighty-five hundred square feet is the neighboring lot.
That's a small one, too, right? Okay.
This is Mike. And as we often see when old resorts are broken up, we have substandard lots. Um, this shed, while it certainly should have been permitted and discovered that it was uh crossed the lot line, uh, quite possibly when the resort was sold and it should have been identified then and obviously wasn't. Uh, I think it's reasonable that they're trying to do the right thing by getting it as far off the lot line. The neighbors seem to be fine with it that are immediately adjacent. They will be removing the uh small shed from the property and they've already removed, uh, I'm not sure how many square feet of the perimeter to meet the impervious surface. So I believe the property owners are trying to do the right thing. Um, I guess I don't see a problem with this request.
The intent is to move the steel shed where, this is Larry, sorry, um, where the small shed sits now, correct?
Yes.
And that tree has been removed already also? Okay, so that is where it's planned to go?
Right, yeah.
Yes, in view of the fact that there's only so much space to work with, I would be in favor of this as well.
This is Veronica speaking. During lot views, I believe I asked the gentleman, the two cabins share that gazebo and that paver platform? I mean, did you own both? You just kind of a shared thing?
That was there also when we bought it.
The gazebo and the?
Yep.
So you only did the shed, then?
We, yeah, only, I mean, the other one fell apart, yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure since the, it kind of matched the gazebo with that metal roof.
Wow.
Eric has the, the, um, the design for a holding tank and no drain field, um, for, I guess from the cabin one. Has that been approved? The staff write-up indicates that, that uh the drain field is failing under the gazebo and they're going to a holding tank. Um, we definitely have a solution to that issue that uh.
We've got the design on file. We don't have the permit issued yet.
Damn, I'm sorry, bud. You haven't needed a permit?
Design is on file, but we have an issue to permit.
You don't see an issue with that, that that would be approved? Or permitted, okay. For me, my personal side with the, the gazebo and, and the remaining patio, I'm definitely supportive of it. I'm not so sure I um, I'm supportive of that large of a storage shed on that size property.
And there's currently, this is Veronica speaking, you don't have any other sheds on the property then, right? Just, just that one would be the only one. Cause the little one would be removed.
Correct.
During lot views, I noticed that the same type of materials that the gazebo and platform pavers, there's a little bit of pavers at, on the front of the lakeside cabin. Do they match or are they similar? Are they the same style?
Same company did them.
Yeah, so they, they put on a little patio out front, too.
Well, whatever, yeah, walkway.
Before it goes, yeah.
Yeah. We didn't do that either. We didn't do anything. I looked at the place in nineteen ninety-nine and it got sold and then when it came, not nineteen ninety-nine, twenty nineteen, that would have been a long time ago. And then when they sold, we, they remembered meeting us, because we literally looked at it the day that we bought it. They bought it. And uh, when they were selling, they came up to us and that's how it kind of unfolded. So it's kind of crazy how it turns around. Oh, wow.
Eric, for the tent, the canvas structure that was previously there where the metal structure now is placed, do we have any documentation on it?
Size-wise.
Size-wise, correct, yep, or any?
Seems smaller than what that current shed is.
If anything, it's wider, because we put that garage, a, a door on it to be able to close it. And it had to be a certain width for that to get a garage door.
I don't know. I'd have to, yeah, if we don't have permits on it, I doubt the assessors would have included that in anything.
Well, this is Veronica speaking while he's looking for that information. I'm, I appreciate the efforts being put in place um on removing some of the paver platform to meet the impervious surface. And I do appreciate the efforts of getting that shed to at least try to meet the setbacks. You are limited, as Mike had suggested or had said, that when these resorts get broken down into smaller lots, we find that we do experience these issues. Having a shed, though, is, it is nice to have somewhere to store some things. I understand Ken's concerns with the size, which is why I'm trying to find the size of the canvas one.
Shed with floor. Well, that's a small one, right?
Yeah, that's that little one.
Ten by six. Brick pavers, deck without rail, open gazebo, deck with rail. Doesn't list it at all.
I don't think there ever was anything on it that I ever was able to find.
Yeah.
Cause I actually wanted some documentation, too, just to say, you know.
Just figure out what we, we have there.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm not an expert, you guys.
Do we have any other input from the other members on?
This is Tim. I'm, um, because of the size of that lot and, and pushing toward the neighbor, whether they agree or not, I, I'm okay with everything like Ken, but I also agree with Ken on the, on the shed.
Yeah, it's.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if I may. Um, I'm just wondering, since the shed was temporary structure in nature, the assessor might not have even documented that because it's not a really technically a taxable item. So that's why it might not be in the assessor's records. We don't have a record of the size.
Yeah, that's, thank you. That's what I was trying to verify as well. I don't think we have any kind of information on that.
There is no bottom on the.
On either one, correct.
Yep, yep, yep.
Correct. And agreed, those canvas-type structures are, are very temporary. They don't, you know, they're not anticipated to last very long.
We actually thought we were doing a good thing, making it look better.
Well, if, if we want to move forward, we can move forward with the items that we all definitely are in agreement with. Ken, you've mentioned during your comments that you would be open to a smaller metal structure.
Well, I, the, the um, problem to me is, obviously, this is a small piece of property and, and everybody would like a shed or to put their boats and stuff in or a garage and it's not there. But they have two boats, jet skis, other things. They're gonna have to store those someplace. So why should we build something and place it here um when it all only solves parts of the problem and has the non-conformants that go with it? You could, you could get rid of that small shed, build a little bit larger one that met setbacks on both from the lake and on the side that would give you more storage. Uh, but maybe you wouldn't be able to put a boat or something into it. So I just, I don't know. Or maybe I'm pushing a minor issue, but, and the neighbor is okay with it, but um, yeah, that's, that's my view.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. I, I understand. I, I agree. I mean, we are moving it to try to meet setback, but again, if it was gone entirely, then it wouldn't be an issue at all.
Well, call a question for someone to make a motion.
Anybody have any other comments or anybody ready for a motion?
I'm gonna try to make this simple. I'll make the motion that we approve the variance application for the gazebo and pavers. And for the findings of fact, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? Yes, both of those have been there prior to the owner purchasing the property and they have, uh, with the removal of uh some of the pavers, uh, they have met the impervious surface requirement of the ordinance. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control? Yes, a small patio and gazebo uh between two cabins on, on a small property is, two small cabins on a small property is, is reasonable outdoor space and it's on the uh, away from the lake side of the closest cabin to the lake. Is the need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? As often is the case when uh resorts are broken up and sold, we ha, we are resulting in small lots, uh, and it's not created by the current owner. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of locality? Uh, yes, it's a former resort and when you look at most of the structures, it looks very similar to the adjacent neighbors, uh, excluding the large house across the alleyway or end of the road. And accept number five for the staff findings of fact.
Okay, thank you, Mike. We have a motion to approve part two with the um paper platform and part three with the sixteen foot by twelve-foot permanent gazebo to be retained, as they've already met the impervious surface by removing the other pavers. Um, and he's created the findings of facts, one through four, and adopted number five. Do we have a second?
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
Second by Tim. Tim, how do you vote?
I, Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. Parts two and part three, the gazebo and the pavers have, or the after-the-fact application have been approved, five to zero. Now for part one on the metal shed.
I don't know what we, what are you suggesting? We, I mean, we already are trying to get it off the drain field and moving it. I know it's bigger than it, it's three feet.
Mike, what was your plan in making it easy? Were you gonna go ahead and make?
I was gonna let you guys decide where you wanted to go, since you, you uh voiced opposition to what my sentiments were.
Well, and this is Veronica speaking. I know in the past, when it comes to property lines, we, we are very cautious and are very careful of the set side lot line setbacks. Um, just for that reason, to protect the, the neighboring properties. Um, and situations where we approve them, it's because the situation is unique. There's problematic issues. This is not a pop problematic issue. This was created, this, you know, this is just because, sort of thing. It's not. I mean, the problematic part could be, you know, where they blocked off these resorts and we have a smaller lot, but otherwise, again, it could have been a smaller shed. It could have, you know, they could have bought, made something, purchased something, you know, contacted Environmental Services, see what their options are um before, you know, before moving forward. So I, I can see it both ways. I, I greatly appreciate the efforts that you're wanting to move it and, and getting it three feet away um or at least, you know, off that side lot line.
I really wish the company would have reached out.
Unfortunately, we all wish the company would have, or yourself, contacted Environmental Service. That is, that is your responsibility as a homeowner as well, is to see what your options are and, you know, a property owner, see what you can and cannot do in the shore impact, the shoreline.
This is Ken. Um, this whole problem was created because the owners did not go through the proper permitting or variance activity. And what we're trying to do is um make it okay that they did that uh by leaving them or allowing them to retain what's there. And with that in mind, I make a motion that we deny part one uh for that shed.
Okay, and do you want to um provide findings of facts?
Well, try. Um, is the variance in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the official controls? The shed uh will, um, is asked to be placed uh in violation of setback from the lake and setback from the property lines uh on a very uh small lot. Um, and I do not believe that's in harmony with the official controls. Is the owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not proficient by an official control? Uh, although a shed for storage is a reasonable request, given the size of the lot uh and setbacks, uh, it's not a reasonable request. Uh, is the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the owner? The owner created the problem by constructing uh without a permit, a shed. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? I guess I would say yes on that. Uh, there, the other structures around property-wise, uh, this would not make a big difference. And then, except the number five, economics are not excited in the application.
And then, except the number five, economics are not excited and the application is a practical difficulty.
Thank you, Ken. So we have a motion by Ken for part one to deny the after-the-fact request to retain the metal shed. And we, he created the fa, findings of facts, one through four, and adopted number five. Do I have a second?
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken, second by Tim. Tim, how do you vote?
I, this is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote nay.
Larry, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The application for part one has been denied, three to two. You will receive, um, a letter from Environmental Services Office with the decisions about all of the parts, one, two, and three, in the next couple of days. So that way you can see what the next steps are. He'll give, they'll, you can also talk to them about giving you options on what you can build in that location. That would be my suggestion for you is to say, what size structure can I fit in this spot so that I can have some type of shed? Because obviously you're gonna be under your impervious surface.
Yes, I mean, I have to ask them that, but if we just take that shed and take three feet off, if that works or and then I have to have another variance for the, it will still be original high watermark? Or, you know?
Questions for Environmental Services?
Exactly, yeah, that's just something, yeah, so after you get your decision letter, you can contact them and say, you know, what can I make work in this area? Obviously, that's probably the only spot you're gonna have to work with and see what you can fit in there and, and they can even, you can have them come out and do any kind of setbacks for you and show you, this is the setback for here and this is where, you know.
Or if there's room on the other side of the cabin one?
Yep, there, there could be.
Kind of situation over there, too. There's just not any.
Yeah, but those are, those are some things that I would highly suggest contacting them and talking to staff, so. Okay, next item, we have miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous communications?
As far as next month's agenda, we've already got six applications submitted. Deadline is next Monday, so I imagine it's gonna grow beyond that point, so plenty to do in October. That's what I've got.
This is Veronica speaking. I will most likely be gone for the lot views, but I may be here for the meeting. But I will, I will have to do lot views on my own, so. But I should be back for the meeting, so. Anybody ready for, uh?
This is Mike. Make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
This is Tim. I'll second.
Oh.
I, I just have a comment, a point of discussion, um, on plats and subdivisions that are, that come before the board. Specifically, Mr. Ott's plat. Is there any way that the Environmental Services Office can look into the, the legal parameters of requiring that the, at least the preliminary plat be approved before property sales can occur so that property owners don't get left in limbo if the plat is denied? They've already purchased something, but the plat gets denied for some reason and it all falls apart? Or do, does the county just prefer to let that be the civil end of things and just totally stay out of it? Just trying to protect prospective property owners from the bad things that can happen? Is, I just wondering, is there a mechanism to do such a thing? Or is it so complicated and overburdensome that it's just not worth the time and effort for the one or two situations where it might happen?
I don't know that there's a way for us to be aware
Okay.
if somebody's executed a purchase agreement, but they're not allowed to record
Anything.
anything until, unless the plat would first be approved and recorded, so. Hopefully, none of that's occurred, but...
Otherwise, it's gonna be a legal issue and they just have to get an attorney. That's, yeah, because they shouldn't be doing that, like you said, until it's recorded, so.
Yeah, I just see people taking risks. Granted, it's on their own, but...
You could carry that out
You better beware.
even these late lot purchases and stuff. Do we inspect them first so they don't land here with some after-the-fact stuff? So, yeah.
I was just wondering if it was an option at all, because then we could avoid some of the backlash that happens. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Good question. I mean, we try, so. All right, okay, one more time. Motion to adjourn, Mike, and second by Tim.
Yes.
Perfect. Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Tim, how do you vote?
Tim votes aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
And this is Veronica. Meeting adjourned.
So, Ken?